For the May thirty first, two thousand twelve open session. The minutes for the June seventh, two thousand twelve open session. The minutes for the June twenty ninth, two thousand twelve open session. Minutes for May thirty first, two thousand twelve close session. Minutes for June seventh, two thousand twelve close session. Minutes for the June twenty ninth, two thousand twelve close session. We have the student transfer releases for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen as amended. Uh, we have the North Carolina School Association ratification credit hours. And we have the advisory councils for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, uh, with the amendment. Uh, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I ask first, is that the minutes for the June twenty ninth meeting as amended?
Uh, as what was sent out by?
Ms. Jeffs?
Yes.
Okay.
The first, June seventh, I'm sorry.
June seventh, June seventh.
June seventh, yes. So that does include those changes which you should have in your.
Alright, is there, is there a motion, can I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Sheriff, point of order. If it's possible today, I don't want to get into the end, but is it possible to shake side? I should recommend recess to vote a little more.
If you need to, we will do that.
Not all of us are going.
Alright, let's try, so let's just try to take five minutes, I know that's hard to do, but.
It's already silly in that direction. Then, do you think I'd be doing this? I don't know if that was the case, but I know it was that damn stress. It's awful. Okay. You know, if it was personal, I believe it was, so. I believe all of it, I believe all of it.
Looking away?
Yeah.
That's it.
Like, what's changed, do you?
Well, I believe in calling. I have, I have to agree. I really believe in someone who's like. I think basically where I'm here. Uh, we don't hear you talk. Cause I'm, I'm, I'm still.
I like Paul, I didn't introduce myself. I'm so nervous.
Oh, excuse me. Come on, my friend.
Yeah, we are.
And you've gotten very good.
Alright, there were, there were a number of folks that wanted to, to make, uh, motions and then the report directives. And so I, uh, just decided to give everyone the opportunity to, uh, to make those at this time. So I, I would like for you to, uh, board members, if you have either a board directive or a motion to, to state which ones you're making. And, um, we will, uh, we'll give a second and discuss it, or if you don't get a second, we'll move on to the next segment. So.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a brief discussion, such a thing, on environmental issues that we brought up from the public.
Yeah. Is there a second?
A second. I regret it, because I don't think it'll be a brief discussion.
The only thing I was gonna say is we had a meeting.
We still, we still need to vote on.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, okay.
We had a thought.
You made a motion, so you're gonna vote on it.
Alright, so all in favor of, of having a brief discussion about the environmental concerns? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Alright, I guess the best place to start would be, uh, Dr. Baldwin.
Would you, I was, I was just gonna say, would you?
Okay, yes.
If that's okay.
You can speak any special.
The only thing I was gonna say is that I appreciate the comments about the concerns. We had a meeting today, the meeting about four thirty, and had a big discussion about environmental concerns. And they, it was more attached that it would be done in a timely, meaningful, and fullness test than it would be done. So, it was, and that was it. I just thought that was important to put out there. And like, I know that we're gonna be doing this, but.
You think that's anything wrong? You think that's all the discussion?
I was hoping.
Well, I will be making, uh, a motion, I, that I, um, I submitted to, uh, our board chair seven days in advance. As requested per board, uh, policy. So that'll be coming later, Jim, I'll, I'll wait to talk about that then.
Alright, does anyone else have anything?
I would just add, I would add one thing. Uh, and there, there, we can, hopefully we can, we can find a way to be settled in our discourse and our agreements and our disagreements on, on. And I hate to use the term politics, because quite frankly, politics shouldn't come into play in what stood in best on our kids' schools. However, having said that, my wife has worked in this building for going on sixteen years. And I can assure you, if we get test results back that show not only, whatever problem shows in this building, I'll be the first one to hold my hand up and say, I don't mean I need to put students in here, but we need to move our staff and our personnel out. I don't know what the answer is, where we get the money, or where we go. Um, but I, I, I resent the innuendo at times that, that some of us are trying to cover up things and that type of thing. I, I'll be the first one, I can assure you, I'll be the first one. Um, if I thought my wife was in any danger of owning this building, coming here every single day at work, I would've already said that. And I've looked at this, and I've asked questions over the years. Many years ago, before we got on board, I screamed at some of the things going on. As just a husband, and the answers I got were satisfactory to me. Did I get all the information? Probably not. But the things that I was concerned with, with my wife working in this building every day, when I heard things about Square D, I didn't know what Square D was, but I figured when I found out what it was. I just did what any, I think any spouse would do. And I asked some questions, and my questions were answered satisfactorily for me. But if there are problems, I'll be the first one to hold my hand up and say, we gotta do something about it. And we not, not just get students out of here, but we need to get our workforce out here and work.
And, uh, Mr.? I, you know, because the issue's been raised, and, and I took some notes from the last, from the work session. I don't know whether I got all the information right or not, and I hope if I did, somebody will correct it. Um, but I, because the question was asked, and, um, that, that I'll try to answer. I will say that I won't preface it with this, sometimes my analogies don't make all that sense. But, we're kind of taking the cookies out of the oven before we finish baking. Because we don't have all the information yet. What you're getting right now is a half-baked cookie. Um, probably from a half-baked person. But I'm gonna tell you what I do, what, what I, what we have been told so far. I want to make sure you understand, we're sitting on a site at one seventy-five Bingham Road. That's what, that's the school system property in address. The property's across the street from one twenty-eight and two hundred, Bingham Road, I believe, accurate. One was, one was Champion Finishing, and one was the other part of the, um, Square D site. That's where almost all of the monitoring wells are. They're on three or four, three stop wells on both sides. Two over up here at the back end. And one that's right out here, a little bit further than the maintenance park. Those are the three that are here. Um, the, when the one here, as I understand it, was put in place, when there was, when the purchase, when, when the property was purchased by the school system, there was testing on. And that, that testing revealed, at least based upon the reports we have right now, no concern about, I suppose, utilizing the site. Subsequent to that, there were monitoring wells, um, put on the site. And this one that was put in place out here near the maintenance park, which is the only one that's not, uh, rather remote from the building. Showed when it was put into place, and I believe ninety-five, uh, no detectable contaminant. That one is considered a champion well, Champion Finishing site. And on this, uh, in its own, I mean, that's their response to, their responsibility, as it's their well, it's on our site, is that it's the well from, to test from their, their property. Which was across the road. The two at the top, some eight hundred feet away from the building, I believe, um, are, are Square D monitoring wells. These are water monitoring wells. This is not the vapor monitoring, that's the air quality. Needs to be real clear, significantly different than CTS issued, probably in a variety of reasons. But one of the most important reasons is this, there's no well usage here. This property has, since we've been on it, and since this building's been in place, always been on city water. So, whatever may be noted up there, eight hundred feet away, from a water standpoint, does not indicate that there's a problem down here from an air standpoint. But that's something that will be looked into further by the school, school system, and by NCD. Before we do anything, that week, before I vote in favor of anything, um, with regard to a further program here. We'll know what the results are from those tests. Um, I think that is a synopsis of what we heard earlier. I don't know if it answers any questions or creates more, but that's, I just wanted you to know, since you were asking questions, what we heard in the work session.
Can I just add a little bit to that? Um, back in January, I discovered that one twenty-eight Bingham Road was on the inactive hazardous waste sites list. Uh, I called Deener, uh, this list has maybe fifty different sites in Buncombe County. Uh, I said, what does inactive mean? Uh, and they said, that means that nobody is looking into it, it's, it's not in an active file. And they also told me that one twenty-eight Bingham site included one seventy-five Bingham Road, because that was my question. I knew they were looking into the STEM High School. Uh, at this point, Donna DiCarlo of Deener, and I also had a conversation with Dr. Baldwin about this. And, uh, at the time, he said he would talk to the maintenance director, uh, because I said, has any testing been done on this property? And he didn't know. Um, so, Donna DiCarlo at Deener, uh, let me know that they, uh, came out to test wells here. And, um, she also told me at the time, you know, she didn't know anything about this site either, until she sent to, to Raleigh. She's actually located in Worschool, she's part of the Superfund Division of the Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. And, um, the CTS plant was also on this inactive hazardous waste site list at the time. And, so she, uh, had to send to Raleigh to get four gigantic file boxes about this site. Um, and I, I just find this amazing, that, you know, nobody had brought it up before I started looking into it. And, um, so, when they came out to do the testing, she told me that one of the monitoring wells had been paved over that's on the school property. And Dr. Baldwin explained that, that when they were building the maintenance, uh, department outside, uh, was covered with some asphalt, I believe, in that process. And that's the well that was only, uh, apparently tested one time when it was put in, although the woman from Deener told me it had never been tested. So I, I don't know about that. We don't have those test results, do we, from that? We did have the test results, she said it wasn't detected at the time. Um, so, the other two wells apparently did test very high for TCE, along with other contaminants like PCE and, um, and I believe one other thing. So, I, uh, I'll be making a motion later about doing an, uh, independent testing, uh, of these wells. Right now, Square D is the one tasked with the responsibility of testing, although they're the ones, uh, potentially responsible for the contamination. So, later we'll talk about, you know, getting an independent testing done.
Just a point of clarification, isn't Deener involved, and Deener, who we talked about having doing the testing and not to Square D?
We can get a volume up first, or we can hear back here.
Wasn't Deener the one doing the testing?
Deener is directly involved, and Square D, uh, getting, getting into the legal liability, and Square D is taking financial responsibility of it. But, that, that test, that's, uh, according to, and Mr. Kowalik is here, and by wrong, please correct me, but by understanding, is the testing data I've seen goes to an independent lab? Uh, it's not, in other words, it's not Square D that takes the data back, or it's not Champion that takes the data back, it does go to an independent lab, is that correct?
That last set of samples that was collected was split sampled, where it went to Square D's environmental consultant's lab and to Deener's own lab. So there's, there's a set of identical samples for each, for each well.
But they didn't pull split samples on the one that's got concrete over, did they?
No.
Okay, because I knew they'd pull split samples.
Board members, any other comments? Alright, alright, do you have any, any other motions that, uh, that would like to be made or more directed at this time?
Well, I'll go ahead and make that motion, if that's okay. Uh, I move that independent testing for possible hazardous waste contamination on the central office grounds be conducted. Particularly in view of the fact that a monitoring well on the property was never tested, um, and paved over. Uh, this testing may include soil, water, and vapor intrusion or air quality testing.
Can I ask, if I asked you before, I would decide what I would second that, uh, of our, our board term. It is, I don't obviously understand enough, once Deener's involved, they're in charge of the oversight, is that correct? And can, can the, because the wells themselves are actually owned in the legality of Champion and Square D, could we do that? What she's, what the, what the motion is, I mean, and, and from a legal standpoint, couldn't we do that?
There are lots, there are many parts of what she suggested, is Baldwin, sorry, that, I'm gonna break down.
Could you speak up, please?
Of what Miss Baldwin suggests that we can do. Sorry.
Could you speak up, please? I can't hear you back here.
I'm sorry. So, yeah, I don't see any problem about, she said, I, I think really what you're asking for, Miss Baldwin, is, you know, probably a full face environmental testing?
I want the school system to, you know, to be proactive and take that step in doing independent testing around.
But.
And I think it, which may include, um, water, soil, and air quality testing.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just, just for clarifying, I mean, I'm obviously off board on how you say we need to do the testing. Um, but I'm also concerned about the cost of, of doing this, and if. And you also, it varies there through with vapor testing, and some other things. I, I guess I, um, what are you thinking of cost, are you gonna, or is that gonna come out of the school budget?
That's something that Dr. Baldwin could present, would present to us, um, after they look into the independent testing and get some quotes on how much it might cost. But I was, I mean, we do have a capital outlay fund balance, and that money can only be used for, I would assume, you know, anything related to the buildings, to the maintenance, and this testing, um.
And do you consider Deener being an independent organization?
Well, considering how long it took the CTS plant, uh, fiasco, um.
In other words, you're.
The cover up at Camp Lejeune, I think that was referred to, I read the articles about that online. Um, you know, people died there, and nobody did anything. I don't trust Deener personally.
So you would want an independent study?
Yes, I think it's a proactive action on our part, which will look, I think it will, you know, show that we are trying to do something to rectify this situation. We're not just gonna sit back and wait, uh, on the government to take care of us, and who the hell on that might be.
If I don't, if I don't do this, why don't we, uh, ask staff to look into, um, first of all, the, you know, what we have to do to obtain those samples ourselves?
Okay.
And, you know, maybe instead of two samples, we can do three samples, and maybe we can take the third one, send it to, to another lab, and then, uh, but we also need to know the cost.
Right, and I feel like we're on a tight timeframe, if we're planning to start.
We may have to have a special meeting to, uh, in order to do this, so just keep that in your mind, uh, Dr. Baldwin, is that, is that pretty clear?
Absolutely, I, I do want the board to realize that, and I think I, I said this, and by the way, the timeline and the facts are on audio for the work session, for anyone that's interested. But, to understand the commitment we under, that, that at this point in time, coming from Square D is not only to test, to go into the asphalt, test that well that the last results were ninety-five. So, uh, we do have those results, but that was nineteen ninety-five. Uh, but beyond that, the commitment is being to actually drill an additional well closer to, uh, our facility. Uh, and they are exactly the cost of the work. Uh, again, if there was a concern about Square D trying to stack the decks, um, I don't know the commitment to do an additional well would come into play. It's simply, we gotta make sure the board aware of that, because if we do supplemental testing beyond that, I think that's, that makes a lot of sense, we're gonna cover every base. Um, but also understand that Square D has, again, and, and understanding, in fact, we met with their representative, uh, last night. That the commitment that's being presented to NCD is that they, um, get the testing data of the distance well closest to the maintenance park. And remember, Mr. Kowalik's statement, because I've heard it multiple times, that the concern, the concern regarding, um, um, any type of, of air quality issue, air quality issue. That it, it does come into play, but the, the testing, location of that particular, uh, waste to the facility. In other words, depending upon, uh, you know, uh, testing results of a well eight hundred yards beyond the facility doesn't tell us in terms of, of our concerns with the building itself.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear, because I've heard a couple different things. And, is the motion, or is it the intent of the board, whatever, to direct the administration to go out and do this testing immediately? Or to come back to the board with proposals and costs of what that testing will be? I just wanna make sure it's clear for Dr. Baldwin and his staff, because I, I heard both things being discussed.
Well, I, I believe that the intent is for Dr. Baldwin and his staff to see.
Let me, can I reword the motion again, get a new statement out?
This one, uh, uh, my understanding is that we're asking the administration to, uh, look into the possibility of a third independent test. What would legally be involved, what the cost would be to do that?
That's not how I worded it, I said.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying that's the.
That I can change that.
We can also be more directed at this point, to set a motion, and, and you, that's what he says, this is.
Well, I mean, she made it as a motion, so.
Can we?
We have a motion to second, or a motion to move on the floor, is that correct?
I amend the motion, can I amend my own motion? Okay. Um, I amend the motion on the floor to say, um, I move that, uh, we direct the administration to look into, uh, the cost and feasibility of independent testing for possible hazardous waste contamination on the central office grounds, based on the fact that, uh, two monitoring wells, uh, tested two hundred eighty-seven parts per billion and seventy-one parts per billion, is that right? Period.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Sounds like you're dictating to.
That was correct. Actually, it was seventy-three.
All in favor?
Wait, I, before, before you, I wanna make sure, to me, to me, the, the cost, I understand some people are more concerned about cost. I think it's they, they assume I am, I'm more concerned about, about what we're testing for. Um, and I, and I think that, um, cost is, is one part, but the key to what you have stated in, in the motion, is the word feasibility. In the feasibility, I wanna make sure that, that what we're talking about is not only time and plan, and, I mean, time and who, and, and that type of thing, who's gonna do it? But, and, and how, um, but also whether it's necessary or it's unnecessarily redundant, given what is being reported as, as being, to be conducted anyway. That may not be something that, that anyone else is as concerned about, but I'd like that to be included in the staff's presentation to us.
I guess when I say cost, I'm thinking of getting quotes for more than one lab.
I wouldn't talk, I, I understand, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I just wanted to clarify.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
So there, there was amendment to the main motion made by Miss Baldwin, second, and so we need to vote on that.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now we need to vote, vote on the main motion, which is as amended by Miss Baldwin.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, all opposed? Alright, um, next.
Chairman, I hesitate to make this, but I'm gonna make the motion anyway, and it's a motion, it's not more directed. Because it's much like Mr. Craig's motion regarding Mr. Green's, um, the ratification of the naming of the, sorry, of Mr. Green. Um, I move that the Board of Education ratify the current Buckman County Schools hiring process, which includes the use of an all-encompassing procedure, including advertising for positions, collection of resumes, interviewing of appropriate potential candidates, reference checks, and background checks. The hiring decisions should continue to be based upon the candidate's interview credentials, references, and background checks. Continuation of this procedure, which has allowed Buckman County Schools to have extraordinary teachers and administrators, is evidence by the Buckman County Schools being the top twenty school districts in the nation, highly qualified, I'm sorry, nationally certified teachers, and a system which has a high retention of quality employees for educating the education of students in Buckman County Schools.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify your point about the twenty percent of teachers being board certified, you're.
I'm serious.
I mean, the twenty, being twenty, I'm sorry, that's a percentage, and if you go by the number of teachers, we don't rank as high, because like Henderson County has more board certified teachers than we do, for example. But, that's beside the whole many points. Um, to me, the, I don't understand why you guys are so resistant to, uh, my proposal that we have a recruitment and selection policy for hiring the most highly qualified employees, to guarantee that we aren't having nepotism, cronyism. Uh, you know, that we are using objective criteria, uh, when we got a hundred and thirty applicants for one teaching position, let's say, in an elementary school. And, uh, we hire somebody, for example.
Just want you to get ready to cross the line.
I'm just making a hypothetical.
No, you're not. Get ready to cross the line.
Well, anyway, if you have over a hundred applicants, let's say, for a position, when you want the cream of the crop, maybe there's a PhD in that batch. Uh, you know, I want the person teaching my kids to be the most qualified possible, like, want them to have a degree in that area. I think it's demeaning to the profession when we go out and hire people with maybe a business degree or something.
Miss Baldwin? That, that would be crossing the line.
When we have that many applicants, for example.
Miss Baldwin?
It's a hypothetical.
That was not hypothetical.
Um, and, and since I made the motion, I would like to respond to that if I can. Um, I don't think that you, Miss Baldwin, or anyone can identify for me, in closed session or otherwise, individuals that do not meet the criteria of a highly qualified educator in this system. There is no employee that I'm aware of, whether it's a teacher, um, captain. There is no employee that I'm aware of, whether it's a teacher, cafeteria worker, bus driver, custodian, a principal or administrator, that is, did you say embarrassment to the, to the system or to the teaching profession, or something a lot demeaning to the teaching profession, uh, in this system. I appreciate the, uh, criteria that we have, and that's the purpose of the motion. I'm not resistant to, uh, a policy which ensures that we hire and retain the most qualified individuals in our, in any of our positions in this school system, whether it's teachers or otherwise. I think we have, I think we have that policy. I don't agree with what you're saying, and that's the reason that I made the motion.
I guess I've given you the example before of Guilford County Schools, where they have a policy, and they even ask to look at student growth data for the last two years for the people they interview, who have experience, of course, and I see them going out, they have a talent development director. They even hired recruiters to go out and, and help find the best possible teacher for their kids.
Ms. Franklin?
Mr. Chairman, I've had an opportunity to work in this school system in the capacity of being a mentor. And in that time period, uh, the state made hiring highly qualified people. We had to. So, in that regard, and having worked in that capacity, we had, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Lopez, ninety-eight percent of our population are highly qualified?
No, it's over ninety-nine percent.
Okay, I'm a little shy. So, in that regard, I would like for the people in this room and anybody else to know that we do hire highly qualified people. And what is, uh, what Ms. Baldwin is saying, in my opinion, is that, um, she is determining the qualifications of people based on the degrees that they have. And, um, having a degree, a PhD, or two or three master's degrees does not make you a good teacher. We have minimum qualifications, which meet the state requirements for high, highly qualified. And then we have teachers with a menagerie of degrees, working in our classrooms, that provide quality education for our students. And I'll say that's it.
All right, um, does anyone else have anything they want to say?
I, I would ask, if I may, a question of Dr. Baldwin and your opinions. I've asked it before, we, we've been at, I'm, I'm going to be curious to, to know what your charge is, Ms. Lopez. What Ms. Lopez's charge is to thread schools and the processes in place for hiring teachers. I don't want to take an hour to do this, like just say, teachers in Buckland County Schools. Use that as an example, or use the hypothetical that was presented from, from the other room. If that's possible, that's, that's in order.
Ms. Lopez, would you address, I know we, we discussed this, quite a bit, but, but, can you address the Guilford County situation as well, please, because I think you've researched that.
Actually, several things, except we said, if you'll allow me to address. First of all, Mr. Bryant, we charge our principals with, you've got to find the best qualified person for the job. And that means they have to make those minimum appointments. The federal number that actually requires getting their child left behind, the teachers have to be licensed and highly qualified. And so the licensure standards were really ramped up in about two thousand two. But principals-
Mic's not working right. Mic's not working right.
How's that?
Better.
The principals take into consideration a number of things. The policy that Guilford County has, it is the, I believe it's the same one that I saw, which is the same policy basically that the North Carolina School Board Association has. So it will be a policy that we're looking at. It does say that a school system would hire the most, highly, the most qualified person, given the interview, the credentials of the person, the needs of the school, the need, the, the fit of the school. I mean, you would take into account many things that you all can't know, looking at the paper. You know, I, I grant you that. Talked to a principal the other day about how he, they needed a strong math teacher on their fifth grade team, because they felt like that was a weakness of their other fifth grade teachers. Well, that's not going to come across when you look at that board material. Uh, the issue, but, you know, a policy like that, we, we would love a policy like that, but I'll tell you that that's what we're already doing. The issue about the degree, when someone majors in elementary education, for example, that is no different than someone who goes to school for four years and majors in business, and then major in political science, and they change their mind about what they want to do with their life, and they go to UNCA and decide to get licensure in elementary education. They take two years of coursework, sitting side by side with that undergraduate, and they also then get licensed in elementary education. I would argue that that might even be better. And that student who went right out of college, right out of high school, and went to college and majored in elementary education, the person, this other person probably has life experiences, they have a whole other, they have a bachelor's degree, they just changed their minds later on about what they wanted to do. But it is the same program that they complete. They just learn about getting their general requirements at a different university. So there, there is no difference in that. And that's true with the other programs across the board. So when we bring somebody to you in that personnel report, we are making sure they meet the minimum qualifications. And if it says that their license is clear, or even that it is pending, that we don't put them on that report for a probationary contract. And the majority of the people that you saw on that board report were for a probationary contract, unless we check that out, because we can't pay them with state funds, which is what we use to pay most of our teachers, unless they meet those requirements. It kicks out of the state system. And Ms. Parker will come to see my office and say, why did you hire this person? So. So, those, we go into a lot of trouble to make sure, after the principals go into a lot of trouble to make sure they're, they have no interest in not hiring the best person. And making sure that they hire the best person, and we go into a lot of trouble to make sure that they have a criminal history check, that it's acceptable, and that they, um, meet the qualifications for life. The Guilford County issue, Dr. Baldwin, sorry, I got a little bit worried there. The Guilford County issue, Guilford County, um, is participating in something, a program called Mission Possible, which sounds like a wonderful thing, that I would love for Buckland County to be able to participate in. They received federal grants for that, to the tunes of several million dollars, and they pay incentives to teachers to go to hard schools where they have difficulty getting highly qualified staff. The reason they were able to qualify for that is because they had such a high turnover rate at those schools. We would never qualify for that based on our turnover rate, and, and probably other gap was considered as well. But I did talk to folks in Guilford County about that.
So the, the, the grant money was used to incentivize teachers to go and pay-
It is an incentive part of the product.
Pay whatever the lower standard of whether it was low performing, or a rural school, whatever it was that they were, they were-
But they still did establish criteria, which I thought was great for teachers, you know, saying, you know, they wanted the student growth data, so they were raising the bar, and that's what I'm talking about here. I think I'm, I'm not making it clear, um, but I, I feel like we need to hold our teachers to a, a high standard, a, a really high standard. If we have so many applicants, like I said, you know, why pick the person with zero experience? I mean, my child goes in the classroom, I mean, it's, it's a known fact, it's not the teacher's fault, it's their first year teaching, you know, but sometimes they do have, uh, some trouble with, you know, there's things experienced teachers know, uh, more techniques, uh, you know, with the child possibly. But, you know, I'm thinking from the viewpoint of a parent, I would rather see my child go in a classroom for the teacher's experience, where maybe they've had a master's degree, or done advanced licensure, uh, type of things, rather than somebody fresh out of college, uh, somebody who's, you know, started in another field and switched. When we had so many applicants, over, maybe over a hundred for a position, we had, we could be picky. That's what I'm trying to say. And raising that, that standard. Yeah, I mean, I'd still like, why choose, you know, choose, be picky?
Mr. Craig, did you have time to-
Well, I, I don't know if this is appropriate, I don't know if she wants to say anything, I'm, Meg Turner's a principal and assistant, and I'm serious with her, but also might be on hiring someone, is that appropriate?
Oh, God.
I'd be happy to come and speak to that to the board.
I mean, I, the question was, well, why would a, why would a principal?
She's a staff member, the chair, or superintendent, can't see the input from the staff.
If you would like to come up and speak to Tony?
I put you on the spot, yeah.
Not that he's putting you on the spot.
I don't think Meg's that kind of problem, expressing her opinion.
It looks like your hair's going back.
That was a discussion.
There's nobody more invested in principals in hiring the most highly qualified teachers in our buildings. I'm a mom and a principal, and, um, I can say that as a mom and a principal, there are lots of factors that are really important when we hire. I'm a person that also recognizes that my viewpoint as a principal is limited to just that, mine. So there are lots of people at Borden High School, and early college, and at the other schools where I worked before, that helped me make hiring decisions. This summer, actually, I called Mr. Craig, and I said, I have a brand new teacher with not a lot of years of experience. We have a particular need to go and hide, and I'd love for you just to take her out to lunch and talk to her. He's a parent, um, and I really respect his opinion. We have other teachers and students and parents who all participate and provide input, and there are a number of factors. I think Ms. Lopez addressed a number of those in terms of experience. This year, we've hired about seven or eight teachers at Owen, and a couple of those are fresh out of school. A couple of those have some experience, um, but in addition to experience and degrees, personality, temperament, fit within a department, fit within a school culture, the school improvement team priorities in terms of what we're trying to accomplish in the skill set that that person brings in. There's no way you can look at a piece of paper or a list and determine anything about that hiring decision specific to that, that person. It's a really difficult thing. My father used to give me a hard time about not making decisions quickly, because I really like to precolate. You know, I had a conversation with an employee today about moving into a different position in the building. I said, I really want you to think about it, you know, until Monday, come back to me, let's talk about it. And I just think, I would want the public to know that I feel like I represent my peers when I say that we are thoughtful and committed to hiring the most highly qualified people, and I'm pretty damn picky. Thank you for your time.
I need, I'd like to say something. Before you leave, I, I want to tell this a quick story. I mean, I've, I've been in the fire, putting a business pretty much my whole life. And one of the men that I worked a lot with, the most successful, one of the most successful men that I knew in this industry, he's got a huge business in Florida, spent eighty thousand dollars on a test, where he can test his employees or his future hires, to determine who is going to be the best. This is a funny story, but it's also kind of sad. First guy he gave the test to was his general manager, and he scored great on the test. In six months, he was stepped on drugs and left his wife and wife company. So, you know, on paper, sometimes you hit a home run, and sometimes you don't. If you, if you're going to base it on just an application. But, uh, I think, and I think, in, in your principalship, you've probably had people that you've hit home runs with, and you've probably had some folks that, uh, didn't do quite what you hoped they were going to do.
The timing of the year matters, too, and when you create the vacancy. I also think it really boos us to know that we have an obligation to, um, grow teachers. And one of my hires this summer was a really bright, uh, young woman coming out of Chapel Hill with a master's degree from Wake, she does not have teaching experience. I really believe that she's going to be a star, and I want her to come and bring her fresh ideas and fresh talents. We have a very large applicant pool for that position, and as we grow her, and as she brings her new ideas from training and, and education to us, I'm really excited.
Did you say she has a master's degree?
She, she does have a master's degree.
I think we're on the same page.
Well, I don't know if we're on the same page or not, because I'm, I'm not picky, and I want you to know that. And I use a large group of people who help me make decisions, and she did have a master's. She was a fifth year, um, student, Wake has a program like that. But, you know, every circumstance is really different, it really is, and, uh, it's a very lengthy and thoughtful process.
And I, this is to reinforce it, I think, what I've been saying, is to reinforce that we are doing, did the right thing, and hiring was highly qualified, and not letting nepotism, for example, influence us. And I did not question Dr. Baldwin's son being hired last year, Pat Bryant's daughter being hired a few months ago, and Mr. Sison's wife being hired. I, I don't, I, I think a policy like I'm talking about will say, you know, nobody has to worry about nepotism, period, because we are hiring the most highly qualified people, no matter, whether they're related to a board member or not, or anybody else in the world. But we have had instances with, recently, you know, where we're hiring somebody with no experience, coming from a different field, hundreds of applicants, and they have to be related to several people. So, this, the type of policy I'm talking about will, will just say nepotism was not a part of our decision. It will, you know, put that seal on it, saying, these are the most highly qualified people. I don't know how anybody can argue with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed?
Um, aye.
Ms. Ms. Meyer, can this, I mean, can Meg tell, can Meg tell us why she's supporting that haircut? I think it's important for everybody to understand what she did in order to, um, to, to raise awareness at her school. I know we're late, but, uh, sometimes it's nice to have an uplifting little observation here.
I, I sometimes will blur out with students, and I blurt it out, they were raising money for me late for life, and they were talking about what they were going to do, raise money, and I said, oh, y'all raised a whole lot of money, I'll let you save my hair. And they said, really? And then I said, really? And, uh, they raised two thousand dollars for me late, and I will gather in the gym and-
All right, anyone else?
Yes, I did have another motion. I move that due to whistleblowing reports and investigation by WLOS, that we conduct an independent audit slash investigation of the maintenance department, comparing work orders and contracted work with the required electrical, mechanical, plumbing and construction permits and inspections over the past five years, especially in view of the fact that shredding of the work orders, uh, was requested on the agenda.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
All right, motion, this, this is curious, second. I would, uh, I would like to make a board directive, directive related to, uh, Ms. Baldwin, the motion that she just made. I would like to make a board directive that we ask the administration, uh, next month to kind of explain to the full board the procedures for, uh, permits for work that's performed, fire marshal. If, uh, maybe possibly we could have someone from the, uh, uh, Buckland County permit office to come and, and talk to us, and maybe we can get an, an update and maybe clarify some information.
That's my motion. Would someone, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I have some discussion, I did have some discussion. I've been sending, uh, emails since April about the whistleblowing reports, and requesting to get on the agenda, uh, so we can learn some more about this, uh, issue, and that there may be contractors out there who also did not get permits for work, yet they were paid for it, nobody checked to see if an inspection had been done. And this impacts the safety of our children and our teachers, all of our employees could be affected by this, if this is involving electrical or mechanical work. I don't think we need to postpone, um, this any longer, and that's what this motion is going to do. You're right, we do need to hear how this all works, but at the same time, um, we need to be upfront with the public, we need to be honest, we need to look at these records, uh, whoever was signing off on every, all this work that was being done. I don't know if it was Dr. McCollum, I'm not, I, you know, uh, he was over facilities and maintenance. We need to go back and say, yes, uh, you know, we do have inspection reports for all this work that was done.
Anyone else?
I'm, I'm just curious, a, a whistleblower, WLOS report, what are you referencing? I, I, maybe my head was in the sand and I missed it, but what are you referencing?
Well, I've been sending since April, I don't know, um, if you always, I send my, uh, agenda request per board policy to our- to our chair, Bob Reinhardt, and to the superintendent. And all those requests for the last four times, I have, uh, put this on the agenda, and it has been ignored, basically.
But that's not answering my question, whistleblower reports in a WLOS report, I'm, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Yeah, I've received phone calls regarding the maintenance department and, uh, the possibility that they are not getting permits for work, or that their contractors are not. In fact, um, I just heard that someone went to the Buckland County, um, permit department and requested a permit for work done over a year ago with the school system, because they heard about what's going on.
Again, I'm still, uh, the, the WLOS report, I'm not-
I think she's using it as an example.
Well, there is, I mean, I've heard that they're looking, WLOS is-
There's not one now, not, not, not what you're saying. There's not been a WLOS story, I missed something.
At Dr. Baldwin, I don't, enough, there hasn't been a story, but I've heard that they're looking into this. Is that correct, Dr. Baldwin? Or is this blunt here, would she be able to tell us, is she here?
I, I'm curious, when you use the term, when you use the term maintenance, and I want to make sure I understand. Uh, when I think maintenance, I, I can only speak to my own experience, and that's around my home, or with my car. When I maintain my home, I change the filter, um, I clean out the gutters. Um, if, if a part goes out on my washing machine or my dryer, I, I have someone to replace that part. Um, to me, those are maintenance issues. Are those the issues you're referencing where, and I guess, to come up with a quick example, if a principal calls the maintenance department and they've got a wing, uh, or four classrooms that are without heat in the middle of January and they need heat, and our maintenance department goes to that site, and maybe somebody can answer this for me, and there is a three hundred and twelve dollar and forty-eight cent part that needs to be bought and purchased and replaced, that part is the inference that that needs a permit? And if so, what in the world is the state of North Carolina doing in terms of statutes that something like that? Maybe that's not what you're talking about, the term you're using is maintenance, to me, that's maintenance. I understand when permits are needed, if we go into Irwin High School or Reynolds High School, and we're going to make out the HBAC unit, and we're going to replace the whole thing, I understand that. To me, that's different, that's not maintenance. That's a, that's a project, that's a, whatever term you want to use to it. But the term I keep here is maintenance, and I, I just want to understand, because I don't think I do.
I think that's what Ms. Baldwin's asking for information about.
Well, the maintenance department does handle any type of electrical, wiring issues, uh, mechanical issues, plumbing issues, um, and they are required by law. In fact, I sent, um, Mr. Reinhardt a copy of the general statute.
I read the statute, and I didn't read that in the statute, but I'm not an attorney. Mr. Shadley, can you reference the statute?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Not off the top of my head, I can't. I, I, I think the question here is, uh, really that maybe Ms. Baldwin is asking, and that maybe Mr. Reinhardt asked for some clarity on, is that has the maintenance department, uh, performed or were they needed a permit? I mean, is that fair enough? I mean, I mean, that's, and they shouldn't have-
As well as contractors.
Well, the con, and I understand that too, but, but let's just take one at a time, correct? I mean, that's what you're asking, right, Ms. Baldwin? Okay. So, and there, you know, in our maintenance department can ultimately, you know, we determine, um, which works we sub out, which work we can do ourselves. And sometimes there may be things that they do that they need a permit for, I don't know.
But i- i- in terms of process, if that subcontractor doesn't, and I'm not advocating that they should, nor would I want it to be, if that subcontractor doesn't do what they're supposed to do, then the liability is, 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 is it buckshot liability where we're all liable? Or, or if there was a problem, we, we would go to them for-
Taking it outside the context of liability, that's a whole, you know, that's a, that's a whole shop. That's just what you just said. But let's talk about liability, let's talk about responsibility. And it would be their responsibility. Um, and if they fail to do, and if they fail to go out and get their permit, then we need to hold them accountable.
And the whistleblower was either an employee or a former employee for Buckland County schools.
You've got a, you've got a motion, you've got a direction, is that right? Yes, Mr. Reinhardt.
Okay.
I have the general statute, um, it's one fifty-three A dash three five seven, one hits.
And just, uh, just for clarification, um, when, when Ms. Baldwin and I met with Dr. Baldwin, when this issue first came up, I was told, she told me face to face that she had received an email. And so I asked her to forward that email to, to me and Dr. Baldwin, so that, uh, he would have a specific example of, uh, you know, maybe something that, that went on. And I've been asking for that email through the Pax and Four Lines. Well, this week I was informed that it was not an email, it's a phone call, and it was a whistleblower situation. I found that out this week.
Well, I think there was a misunderstanding, because I had sent you the email, uh, from this individual related to the maintenance department, where they talked about cost-saving measures as well as some other issues.
And when did I receive that email?
And that was way back, um, and I think the whole board got it, actually. And it was called Cost Saving Measures Maintenance Department or something like that.
I think it's important, I think it's important for every board member to, to understand that anytime there's a complaint, uh, we ask Dr. Baldwin to investigate it. And it makes it really difficult when he has nowhere to start.
And I'd like to clarify that too, I know Mr. White's here, can you, work orders, uh, ballpark work orders do we handle in month, year, what would you-
About twenty-five thousand a year.
Twenty-five thousand work orders per year.
That's regular work orders, yeah.
Regular work orders, and capital projects, two hundred plus, fair?
Two to three hundred a year.
So, you know, again, I have no problem investigating, but, you know, I, I think the real reality of needle in the haystack. So if there's specific information that would assist me in investigating if there's an issue, I think that's what Mr. White wants to try and say.
And, and why would we, why would, why would we try to cover it, and that's the, this five-year investigation? I mean, we, why do we want to cover it up? I don't understand that rationale. I guess, I'm sorry. And that specifically, I mean, that's why I didn't support this motion, because I have no real facts. It's five years of information, and it's from a novice person. And I have been copied on his emails from Mr. Reinhardt, asking you since April for that specific email. And I have not seen until within the last couple of weeks, you say it was a phone call.
Mr. Reinhardt, I know we need to get to your motion, your, your current, like, pitch. It's, it's what we need to put on, but something that somebody said a long ago, maybe about Baldwin. And it ties in a little bit to what Dr. White said. In my opinion, and the reason I ask that be painted on the wall of our chairman, because that's the decision we're making. And in my opinion, Dr. Baldwin's use of the superintendent of this school system's time is to be made, is to be used in the best interest of the students. And coming through twenty-five thousand work orders is not in the best interest of the students in this county. That's my opinion. You've got a lady sitting right over here, if you don't like what I'm, how I'm making decisions, over here. But that's, that, in my opinion, is what you're asking, and this motion is, is, or this directive is to, to find out what the practicality of this is, and I'll support it.
And I think that's a valid comment, that if there are specifics, uh, from the whistleblower, that could be used to that, that would be ideal.
That'd be, that would be out of the, that's a little bit-
I'm willing to take the five years out, but just go back as far as we, as we'll-
That motion's not, just makes it unclear. I, I have a board directive that we ask the administration to come back to us next month and, uh, explain the process, and possibly in connection with the Buckland County, uh, permitting office, if that's possible, if they're available. All in favor of my board directive? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Any more? Motion of the board directive? All right, on to you.
Oh, I have another one, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. No, I do. Um, I moved that all unhealthy snacks, such as Little Debbie's and Lay's products, et cetera, be removed from the lunchroom beginning with the twenty-twelve thirteenth school year, as these snacks constitute only five percent of total revenues, or six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and seven, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand seventy-seven dollars. And look into the model that Ouagga County has for a self-supported child nutrition program. That is increasing catering sales and purchases of USDA food items in order to be self-sustaining.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Right, last month I made a motion that we have the School Health Advisory Council look into, uh, coming up guidelines for healthy snacks served in our intermediate, middle, and high schools. As you may be aware, especially from the, the two WLOS news story, that, uh, children are buying-
Are we discussing a motion? Are we-
Oh, we have a second.
Will you have a second? I was just asking you to push the microphone back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, we do have a second, just create a second in the motion.
You scared me.
And maybe is this, is this a discussion on the motion or a-
Yes.
I'm not too sure.
It's a discussion on the motion. So that motion was not passed, I think Bob Reinhardt was the only one voting for it. So that's why I'm making the motion tonight, that we as the board, uh, decide what this school system should do. We are authorized by the general statutes to have, uh, control, general control and supervision of all school system, uh, activities. And we do have the, um, we have the authority to do this. Uh, and parents have complained, this, when I was campaigning, it was the biggest complaint of all, was about the junk food in the lunchroom. And kids are buying this instead of eating their, their healthy lunches. Uh, and we saw that on TV, we saw it on WLOS. Uh, my kids, I have middle school and high school kids, and they see it all the time. Uh, how can we teach good nutrition and healthy lifestyles when we are selling Doritos and Little Debbie's in our intermediate, middle, and high schools? And as a parent, I don't want that. I don't want my kid to be faced with a choice like that, uh, with their learning money. And-